Evening and welcome to the Lee County Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you don't mind, we will start with a moment of silence. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no public comments, so next we have the vision statement.
Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Policy 2120, the Code of Ethics for School Board Members. The Board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to an accepted Code of Ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the Board; avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board; avoid the misuse of public funds; avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts; and avoid making confidential information public. This Board accepts the Code of Ethics established by the North Carolina School Boards Association.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Agenda is approved. Next, we have the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have the Chairman's Report. I would just like to say that we had our preliminary Evergreen Audit came in and provided the Board with 97 recommendations. We also had 31 commendations, and I would like to commend this Board because what the community may not know is by the time we're out of here, it's almost 12 hours for them of work. I'd also like to commend the staff of Lee County Schools, particularly those who had to help in assisting getting the materials together for the performance audit, and we look forward to making some changes and trying to see what we can do to improve our school system. And next is Dr. Dawson.
Good evening. Just a few updates. As you all know, Tramway Elementary Year-Round School begins tomorrow, and just want to wish them well as they begin a new school year. Also want to remind the Board and the community of this Thursday at noon at Deep River is the closing ceremony for Project Liftoff, which is a wonderful program that Dr. Waller oversees with some special kids in our community. Before our next Board meeting, our teachers' first workday will actually take place on August 7th, and then Lee Early College begins their first day with students on August 8th. Also want to remind everyone of our Second Annual Summer Conference that's being held next week at WB Wicker Elementary School. This will involve teachers and administrators from all grade levels Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Any of you are certainly welcome to attend at any point during the day. We'll start about 8:15, 8:30 each morning and go to about 3:30 that afternoon. We will begin and end each day with a guest speaker in the auditorium at Wicker. Last year, we had about 175 teachers attend. Hopefully, word got out that it was a great time by all, so currently, we have 245 teachers and administrators signed up.
Wow.
So we've got a lot of strategic professional development going on that the teachers chose themselves. They get to pick their own pathway, what they want to sign up for, so they will be able to attend four hour-long sessions each day, and again, we will bookend each day with a guest speaker. Finally, as Ms. Womack mentioned, I just want to thank the Board for the retreat today. I think it was time well spent. Thank you for giving your time and investing in your own professional development. I think it was a good conversation, and I think a lot was learned by all. Thank you.
Ms. Downs.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, you have before you the financials for the month of May, as well as the COVID funding, as well as the charts and the board expenses. I'm open to any questions that you may have. I did meet with Mr. Rommel and Ms. Womack last week, and I am gathering information from surrounding counties in regards to additional ways that we can lay out this information for the Board.
Any Board members have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. I know next we have our Board Attorney, but he does not have a report. We've already heard enough from him today. With all due respect, if you will, please make sure that Ms. Britt has our credit for our hours for listening, and that way you know you'll get paid as well. Next, we have the committee reports, curriculum and instruction. There was no meeting. Facilities and Technology. Jamie?
Madam Chair, Facilities and Technology Committee met on June 20th. Topic of conversation was the modular unit at Southern Lee High School. It was the consensus to purchase an eight-classroom modular unit. That'll be on New Business, and I've got some more details to share at that time. But I did want to mention that the difference in the funding, of course, we took this to the county commissioners, and they approved a four-classroom unit not to exceed $785,000. So it was the consensus of the committee to make up the difference in the funding for the eight-classroom unit using our capital outlay funds and to try and shift a couple of items from that capital outlay over to lottery funds. So we'll be talking more about that under New Business.
Okay. Next, we're on the action items. Approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Now, we're on to unfinished business. There is no unfinished business. Now, we're to new business. I think we're right back at you again, Jamie. Sir?
I can't get away. Let me find my notes real quick. As I mentioned, it was the unanimous consent of the committee to purchase an eight-classroom unit. That's a purchase, not a lease. We wanted to go ahead and purchase it to save some money. The reason we felt so strongly about an eight-classroom unit right now, Southern Lee High School, or last year, Southern Lee High School had an opening day enrollment of 1,226 students, and they had four office spaces that were converted to instructional classrooms, as well as the media center was divided into three instructional classrooms. So we really felt like four was, four classrooms, while it would benefit, would not quite alleviate some of the growth that's over there. Of course, they are over capacity at 1,226. The capacity listed is about 1,200. The estimated enrollment, based on historical figures, is where we are at this time, will be somewhere for 2023, '24 school year, will be somewhere between 1,250 and 1,300 students. There'll be even more students this year than there were last year as an estimate. So we felt strongly about going the eight-classroom route. We received, I believe, four or five bids. The lowest bid was $858,000. However, that company had been in business less than a year, so it was the committee's opinion to go with the second lowest bid, which is $885,000, which was a little bit less than the original estimate that we had provided to the county commissioners when we presented that about a month ago. But we have experience with this company. They did the modular classrooms at Lee Early College, Tramway, and...
Floyd Knight.
Thank you. Floyd Knight. So we felt very comfortable with their proposal, and the setup time is about six to eight weeks. I'm sorry. The order time, from the time we approve, or if we are to approve, will be about six to eight weeks, and then the setup time would put probably a best-case scenario sometime in November. So a realistic scenario would be that the unit would be in place in January for the second semester. I believe Mr. McNeil's already done the, some preliminary work as far as scheduling Duke Energy to drop a new transformer out there for power and a couple of other things. I think we've done the zoning request. We're working on the fire exits and emergency exit plans for weather and that type of thing. That's already well underway with Ms. Poston. So we're, that's our recommendation, and that's about where we stand with the project.
And what was the experience that Chris McNeil, you're the one who had experience with them before? You've not had any problems with any of their modulators or anything? Okay.
The one we have at Bragg Street, and that's another one they did too, Bragg Street and Lee Early College, they were originally here at Lee County High School. They put them here before we expanded. So they moved them to Bragg Street, Lee Early College, set them up. They've guaranteed warranty for the year. They're in Kinston, North Carolina out of, so if I have a trouble with them, they usually here, if it's a roof leak, or I've had before because they've been here for a while, they come out the same day. Setup, no problem setup. They clean up after each other. No change orders. Some of these companies wanted me to do like a soil sample to see what kind of footing they wanted to do. It's level ground. I mean, it shouldn't be no problems. Modular Pro has been contacting me the last couple of days because they know they're the lowest, but I've talked to them and just expressed that, first I asked them how long they're in business. They said less than a year. They still ain't gave me a date when they actually started business. They do have experience. The owners probably have 30 or 40 years' experience at different companies. But I just told them it's up to the Board to decide, but our recommendation was to use modular technologies that we've used the last 12 years. Grace Christian, they use modular technology to set up theirs too. And I talked to the G C that did their work, and they said that it had no problems with them neither.
So the deciding factor was not just to pay, it had to do with experience and...
Sounds like reliability.
Customer service and those things as well. Okay. And there was no conflict of interest of anybody on the committee attaching? Just have to ask these things.
And there was also insulation difference.
Yeah, they, the Modular Pro was the R49 insulation, and the modular technology, what was in the specs to do was R60. So you got better heating and air cooling because the roof takes the most if you've ever been in a modular unit. The older ones, the air conditioners runs all day, but these are heat pumps. And then also the Anadita petitions and stuff in the thing, they upgraded them to what per specs. So modular technology had everything up to specs, modular pros, insulation. I mean, insulation, you're looking at probably $10,000 lease spending on that for the...
These modulators, are we able to move them if we needed to in, say, maybe two or three years?
Yes, ma'am. Right now, the price the guy gave me was about $120,000. If we needed to move it, that'd be move it, set it back up, the aluminum ramps and stuff. The only thing we'd have to do is get power back to it, fire alarm and stuff. I mean, you're looking at, I was telling the committee, that was, it probably costs about $200,000 to relocate it somewhere else. And then I was telling them that, say, we needed four classrooms at another place, and the four there, we can take that and divide it and just have to add ends to it so we can multitask that modular wherever we need. And we can even add to that, too. If we took it somewhere, we needed 12 classrooms, they just take the end off and add more classrooms to it, too. They all get, basically, they all, all these companies get them from the same people. It's out of Georgia. So that price is the same. Most of it is their labor and setup time. And modular technology is the one that actually helped me with the estimates, and they even came lower than the estimates because it's been public knowledge that anybody looked and saw what we was talking about. They knew the estimate, what we was getting around, so.
Modular Pro is the one that's located in North Carolina?
Yes. Kinston, yeah.
Blues Creek?
Kinston, and then Balo.
Blues Creek.
Yeah, Blues Creek.
It's a spelled word. Okay.
What's the difference in what the county commissioners approved and what the cost would be? Do we know?
So the estimated price, because I added $220,000 to both of them when we took it to the county commissioners. So right now, what I got figured is it's going to cost us out of capital around $323,000.
What's the projects that were mentioned that we're moving over?
I'm not looking at that. I don't have nothing, right now, I don't have nothing that's needed and replaced. There's always, we're in the air conditioning times, compressors and stuff on some of these older units. But we'll take it to the committee and go from there, whatever happens. And we usually, after we got our budget, we ain't really talking about and re-lining them up numbers of what we need to do first. But right now, I don't have no emergency. The emergency, I think, is Southern Lee High School of getting them more room because it's, all them kids in the media center, it's just not fair to them, and it's kind of safety, too.
Sounds good. I actually gave, or I'll have a copy for Jamie, Mr. Ladati, the Chair of Facilities, when you go back as well. In the future, as we present to the county commissioners, we will be going directly by statutory provisions and quote that underneath each request that we have in reference to that. There's some, I just want to remind you that some school board members, all of us just does not all know all this, about the county's responsibilities, not just with school facilities, but furniture apparatus, building for the bus and vehicle storage, library science, classroom equipment, water supply, and sanitary facilities, and keeping the school buildings in good repair. And I always make sure we get a copy of that to you as well, but we'll be focusing on those type of directions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Has any Board member got any more questions, reference modulators?
Motion to approve the modular bids as presented.
Second.
I guess if presented to the commissioners were justified. So Mr. Ladati mentioned earlier the space that has been converted to teaching space that wasn't intended to be. So again, I think everybody here knows that we were approved for the four classrooms after we requested eight. I feel like that justification was made appropriately by our Board. And I also want to highlight, if we were to purchase those four classrooms, it's my belief, based on my understanding of the growth coming into the county and reviewing those things for capacity planning, that in another year or two easily, we would have to go back and ask for additional classrooms. So I think that this, by the school system kicking in this roughly $325,000 to purchase the eight classrooms now, I think we're going to save the county easily in the order of $300,000 to $400,000 by not having to make a second request later for an additional four classrooms. So, you know, for those reasons, I look forward to voting in affirmative here.
I'm still befuddled by the decision to try to back down to a four classroom. All it takes is a simple drive down Highway 78 right now, and you see three brand-new neighborhoods going in, and to assume that none of those is going to have a high school student who's going to need a seat at Southern Lee High School is just asinine to me. Pardon it. So I am proud to come behind this vote to say, we see your four classroom, we raise you for a classroom, see you back in a couple of years.
And I think I can speak for the Board, since y'all kind of put me in this position. I can honestly say that when, we did have a meeting with the Chairman of the County Commissioners, the liaison of the County Commissioners, their county manager, our financial chief, our interim superintendent, our Facilities and Technology Chair here, our finance chair, and during that discussion, it was brought up that they would support us getting eight classrooms in exchange for, not in exchange for, but, and they would support that and that we would also do the contract for the high school auditorium at Southern Lee High School, and we would also pay for moving a couple of the modulators around. Now, that did not happen, and I just think that needs to be out in the open, and that is why my rationale is everything when we bring forward, we will be doing it specified by the statutory provisions. I believe this Board has made the right decision to go with eight classrooms, but I would not give up on Southern Lee High School Auditorium. Okay.
Madam Chair, I think we need a vote on that. I think we got a...
That's what I was going to say. Any more discussion?
Madam Chair, I just want to go on record in saying that I was disappointed by our commissioners and their reaction to what we worked that had been done by this Board to present a genuine need, and yet they felt like they knew better than we did, and I am disappointed by that, and I'm hopeful that we will be able to work together in the future and be respected for what we present going forward.
Okay. Are you ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Next, we have the insurance property renewal agreement.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, you have before you the proposed insurance, property insurance renewal for the district. This is with the North Carolina Department of Insurance. Just so that the Board is aware, a year before last, it was housed, the insurance policies were housed at the Department of Public Instruction. The legislature got involved and turned it over to the Department of Insurance. So last year, when they did their initial review, they did feel that the property values that we had on the books across the state were not up to par for what the cost of rebuilding something if it was to be destroyed. So they did give us forewarning, so we were expecting an increase, and we did put within the agenda report the difference in the cost, and that is due to the rise in them increasing the total cost that it would be to replace those.
Am I reading this correctly, that the increase is $20,542.07 for the total of property? Considering the increase in property values year over year that I've seen on my own house, I call that a deal.
If we could ask Mr. Lawson, I know he didn't expect this, but Steve, if you look at GS 115C-534, I'm sorry, 115C-525B, and says fire inspections, before we forget, I need to make sure if you would take a look at that so we know what, because that's something that falls under the county's role as well, and I just want to make sure that we're tracking it, where that falls into that budget request as well. And that's what brought it up. Insurance is not there. School property insurance is the one that's GS 115C-534. I'm not saying we're not going to move ahead, I just want to make sure in the future that we've got it in the proper category. That's okay. And the school property insurance is GS 115C-534.
Find it particularly timely since we had a fire at one of our facilities.
Chris, did you have something?
I was trying to see about the inspection, because they do come to the school twice a year. The fire marshal does.
And they pay for it, for the county?
Yes, we don't have to pay for it. That's, they come twice a year, and the let school inspector comes with them, too.
For the interest of time, what I'll do is I'll make sure I get a copy of this to our lawyer. I just want him to look at the things, and it specifically says verbatim, "School property insurance, GS 115C-534, and fire inspections, GS 115C-525B." And we can look at that later. I won't hold y'all up.
And we also have the Department of Insurance, they come once a year, too, in May. So I really have three insurance guys coming for fire marshal and fire inspections during the year.
All right.
Motion to approve the property insurance renewal in the amount of $190,135.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have Board Policy. Second reading, Chris. Pastor?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, Madam Chair. This is coming back with just second reading. Policy 1610-7800, which is professional and staff development. Policy 3101, which is dual enrollment. Policy 4012 and 7233, which is education for pregnant and parenting students and employees. 6315 drivers and 7503 teleworking. Just as a little refresher, it's basically just some general statute changes correlating, adding some general statute. So it would be the kind of flow together where it would reference each other. And the the big one was the something that I didn't, I thought it was already in place, was the education for pregnant and parenting students and employees. So that was probably the main one in that one. So with that being said, I'd like to make a move to approve the second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'm sorry, Ms. Jones.
Getting her steps in tonight for sure.
Have before you copies of the exceptional children services contracts that will exceed 50,000 before the end of the year, and they are listed out with the amounts with a short description of what the services that are being provided.
Madam Chair, if I wouldn't be out of order, noticing particularly the very last item on here where there's a home health care nurse. I know that that's slightly different from the recommendation in our performance audit that we get refund back for nursing services. Is that the same thing or different? I know our school nurses provide things like medication management for diabetes. They may provide EpiPens for someone who has an allergic condition. That is, from my reading of the recommendation, the types of things for which we could claim reimbursement for nursing services. EC is a little different because that's often under the Medicaid reimbursement. And I see Steve nodding his head. So that's under the MAC reimbursement that we already do. What our recommendation from the from the performance auditor then is referring specifically to services provided by our school nurses. Is that my understanding?
That was mine. Is that yours?
That was within the chapter that I was given a pre-read on. And that's what I understood, is that there are certain services that our nurses provide for which we can be reimbursed because it's similar to, yet different from the Medicaid reimbursement.
There is a sampling that they have to do a time study on, and our district is based on your district size. And we have to provide them names, and then those folks, depending on it's social workers, nurses, teachers, then they have to report their time in as far as hours worked, and then we are able to claim a certain percentage of that back.
So it's a backwards reimbursement, not a front-end reimbursement. Okay.
It's after the fact.
Understood.
And one of the budget amendments is actually related to that.
Okay, sorry.
All right. Any more questions?
Lots of information stuck between my ears, and every once in a while, a few pieces of it squirt out my mouth.
I think everyone's excited because we've had this performance audit, and we've been able to, we got a whole bunch of information in one time, but we're going to go through each section little by little. So be reassured, there'll be multiple more questions. Did you have something, Mr. Gaster? I saw you raise your hand.
No, ma'am, no.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the exceptional children services contracts over 50,000 as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Great. You're next again.
You have before you, these are the last two budget amendments for the June 30, 23 school year. Typically, we try not to have these, but that's the resolution that you guys passed that gave me permission to bring anything to the board by this board meeting. The first budget amendment that you will have is the booking of the E-rate for the connectivity money that we received. In talking with the auditors, typically, they get this information to us earlier than they did this year. But they said that they were behind because of the Gatsby 87. There were some changes, so they were kind of backlog. So he did get it to me, so I was able to do this budget amendment. That's the first one that you see for the 2.1 million. The second one is related to the cost report that Ms. Bowen was asking about. That is the cost report money that we were able to claim for the 2122 school year. And the way that that works, that check was issued on June 30, but we did not receive it in our office until July the 5. And in order for us to be able to claim this and be able to spend it in this fiscal year, we have to book it back to last fiscal year.
Wow. I am I am particularly impressed with the number 709,721. I think it was just barely over 100,000 that we pay for this service. Is that right? So the return on investment is seven times what we paid. That's fantastic.
Motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
Second. I think that was, I give you the name of the second.
Favor all.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the superintendent search consultant contract. We put it out during that timeframe. And just so you're fully aware, the entire list that Mr. Ladati had provided of all the consultants that were used throughout the state of North Carolina, it's my understanding that each one of them was provided an email, Dr. Dawson, Mark? And none of them has replied in time. The only one that we have is the superintendent search proposal that's from the North Carolina School Board Association.
Madam Chair, I hate to do this, but because I am on the Board of Directors of the North Carolina School Boards Association, I would recuse myself from any discussion of this potential contract recipient.
Madam Chair, we just received this before the meeting started. So, okay, I found the question. The answer to my own question, 21,500.
It's what?
It's 25,929.
Where are you getting that from?
Like the fifth page from the back. It's it's totally.
I didn't go down far enough. Thank you.
Yep.
Gotcha.
And I don't understand. Our own policy says you have four days. Susan just brought it to me. It was the only one. We thought you might want to look at it. If you guys would like to hold off and vote on it in August, that's fine. But I do know regardless of what their proposals are, when we sit down to do the contract, there's certain things we may want to add into the contract. Just multiple examples that you that you research when you're looking for a superintendent, what you would like for them to be able to tell you, like how many superintendents have they actually found, and what was their longevity once they got to us, once they were hired and put onto the school, and how effective were their superintendents. But this, since this is the only one that we have, I think that eliminates some of that process. We would just have to be very careful in the wording of the contract, and I'm pretty certain that Steve can help us with that.
Does this even mean we have to choose them if we only had one? Can we revisit this and come back, bring it back to the board table, and look at another option that is doing it ourselves?
If you would like to wait till August, but I would prefer, personally, I would prefer that we not wait any longer than that because of timeframe. Is that what you'd like to do?
Well, I mean, I think it's worthy of discussion. I mean, if they're the only ones right now that submitted it out of five, I mean, could we have a discussion? And there's a lot of talk today at our retreat about community involvement. Well, what a better way to involve our community than asking them what they foresee in a superintendent and what they want, and encompassing some of our community leaders who are involved with the school system to be on a committee with us to help us decide this. I mean, that was the goals that we all mentioned around the table today. And if you want to be, I mean, if we're going to be spending money and trying to look at ways to physically conserve, I mean, why can't we do this ourselves?
Well, that's a great question. So I will ask Steve this question. Steve, as we make this plan, our process to select a superintendent, we're very good with research up here. You know, Ladati's Mr. Google up here. So we have all this research data, and it talks about questions and how we do it throughout the committee. I actually have a report here on setting the timeline. But the the problem's going to come once we get these names, and we've already got some, by the way. We already have some people that have applied for the job. Who would go back to do the background checks, the, you know, the top things that has to be done? Is that something that your law firm provides? Well, that right there told me we don't want to do that. The fact that you're second guessing that you should be the one to do it, and you're our lawyer, that would tell us you're probably not the one to do it. So we would have to have someone, like you're saying, that's not a problem, except you have to have someone that comes in and does all the background checks and the requirements, make sure they meet the requirements that they got to have with the North Carolina School Board, and, I mean, with DPI, all these requirements that we need from the state level. Who would be the person to do that?
So I think you can divide that out.
HR.
And one of the resources, I mean, is just the beginning, is like the superintendent search. This is provided with the state from the administration, from the School Directors Association. And I agree with kind of what Patrick's saying as well about involving the parents, the students, and the staff. And we have to put what we're looking for. I mean, it's got a laid-out plan. So it's up to the board, you know, guys, I work for you guys. If that's something you would like to consider, it would take me at least to the next board meeting to lay out a plan on this is the way we can do it. This is how we can meet all these steps. But I wouldn't be able to give that to you tonight. I'm just going to.
And that's understandable. I'm, you know, when we talk about this, I'm thinking about including members like Jerry Pedley, who's been real helpful to the school system and educational foundation, and teachers and staff and parents. And it's like we discussed earlier, it doesn't mean we tell them who the finalists are, and they get to interview them, but asking them, what do you see in our next superintendent? What do you foresee that you think our next new superintendent needs to have? And it can be a mixture of this. I'm just wondering if this is something we can do. Is it really worth spending the 25,000? And I, looking at the list on the back, we were the eleventh school system to use them, and that was in 2001. We've not used them since. I don't know if we used another one on Dr. Moss, another firm, but we didn't use the school association for them, and we didn't use them for Dr. Brown. And the one we used them for, we left in a scandal.
We're focusing on moving forward. Okay. Well, that's.
I would say, ma'am, if I can, I apologize for interrupting. I would say that's an argument for using an external search firm. I mean, I think the community is looking for this board to turn over every stone and get as many candidates applied as possible, and then vet those candidates. And I think if you use an external firm, just from, you know, being in a position in my industry that hires somewhat high-level employees, sometimes when you use an external firm, people will apply more freely than they would if you're just posting directly to a job posting. There's a lot of people that maybe would want to apply without applying, and they can do that through a third party, where they wouldn't do that, just come into Lee County's website and clicking on a posting and saying, "Apply," and filling out paperwork that they're. So I think it's worth the 25,000 plus or minus to to do the external search firm. I think we can get the the community input in parallel while we're while the search firm's receiving applications. I don't think it puts us behind the behind the A-ball, so to speak, on that.
Without, I'm sorry, Ellen, go ahead.
I was going to let everybody.
Yeah. No, I mean, I don't, I basically mirror what Jamie said. So, I mean, just quickly reading through this, they they mentioned an optional community outreach plan to receive, you know, some, that feedback that we're talking about that I think we all agree is needed to understand what everybody, you know, students, teachers, parents, community leaders think that we should be considering in a superintendent selection. So it looks like that is at least mentioned here to do in parallel. And I guess, I guess for me, it comes down to timing for the board. So essentially, we would be hiring a management team, right, to kind of lead this project for us as opposed to individuals using personal time to do that. And it looks like, just reading through their, you know, their quick list of items that need to be gone through here, I mean, it looks like a large time commitment. I don't know. I don't know if anybody's got that time to freely volunteer for the next several months to go through this without a little external help.
Anything?
No, I see what, you know, what everybody's saying, you know, just like we did the order or whatever. I'm an expert at trying to find a superintendent. And I agree that, you know, we need to have somebody with expertise and people that can apply freely without, from a third party. And just like we discussed today, don't get your name spread all over creation. And I see where Patrick's coming from, because we want that community involvement. I mean, that's, to me, you know, over, you know, what we've talked about with the the prior superintendent is that we have an opportunity to make the district shine if we can get a good superintendent in here. And I think it takes, just like what you said, roll over every stone and really vet who's coming in to make sure that they not only uphold the values of the community, but also can move the school district forward in a positive way. So I'm kind of, I'm kind of like with that, you know, if we can mirror, if we can do what Patrick's recommending, where, you know, at the same time, we get that firm that can be doing this step right here, but it's got the clause in here where, hey, it requires community involvement for feedback. And in that way, it's kind of helping everybody out at the same time. I just wanted to mention that.
I was going to call on Sandra, but I realized she can't talk.
Other than to say, it seems the conversation has come down to whether we want external or self-directed. And I will just say, without regard to this particular applicant, I definitely still want external evaluation. If we want to put a brakes on thing and say, extend the RFP deadline, go out for rebid, anything like that, I'm all for that. But I definitely think external is the way to go.
Do you have some?
I like Patrick's idea. I do. And I'm really torn about the best way to move forward on this. I think that the time that was going to take folks to do this is going to be the difference. I'd like to do what Patrick suggested, but I think practically, we need to go with a search firm.
Let's do what we learned today in the retreats, then. And what did, how did he say? We all have different opinions, but we have one common goal. Those come combined.
Yes. So I have a compromise, if y'all willing to leave. You want to hear me? Okay. Here's the compromise. Our next board meeting is less than 30 days from then. And if I don't have at least three people, three different firms, that can at least get a proposal in by that timeframe, by physically calling in, calling superintendents across the counties, and because not only do we have this, we know what searches they've done, but have we asked any? And I have actually called two or three that have actually used the service, and they were not exactly favorable. So I'll just put it that way. Now, does that mean that was just a coincidence or a bad thing? I don't know. But if we opened it back up, just even a few. But if we opened it back up just even a few weeks, and each one of us, it doesn't have to just be me, but if we know these schools, who did they use when they did their research on them? Because there, I have a lot of questions, because I know how y'all feel. This is the most important decision we will ever make in this county. Your entire time that you've served on this board, it's the most important decision we will ever make. And I really just don't want to rush or go with the status quo. I want our community involved. I want our leaders involved. I want our partners involved, the staff involved. But ultimately, that final decision comes down to us on this board. And people elected you to make that decision. So, I'm just, I agree that it should be, it could be an outside firm, but I still want the community involved. Would that be a fair enough compromise?
It's your recommendation that we put it out for rebid for two weeks? Is that what I understand? And then by the next board meeting?
By our next board meeting. And then if, if in fact, let's pretend nobody else comes out. I'll look at other things, too. First, the Fourth of July weekend. People were busy, people on vacations, maybe they didn't have the time, you know. I just don't know. I'm just, just because it's the only one there, it's like going to a bar and there's only one girl in a room. You know what I mean? You just, we need to just, I just think we need to look a little further. And not that there's anything wrong, and I'm not calling somebody from the North Carolina School Board Association from the bar, I'm just saying that I think we need to dig a little deeper because this is the most important decision we will make. And it should, and I agree, it probably should be an outside firm, but we can tell the criteria for the outside firm what we would like them to do, such as the community involvement, and have those leaders. Would that not work? If you want to move ahead with this, that's okay, too. I mean, whatever y'all want.
Is everybody looking at me?
No.
We can agree to disagree.
To me, to me--
To me, too.
You're off.
It's a no.
For me personally, just like in the other things we've discussed and done before in the past, I mean, what's two weeks? I mean, if we decided to open it back up for bid, just to see if we can get some other people to come in, and that way, we've got some, something to comparison, compare to? I mean, I'm for that. I would really like to have something that I can compare to, rather than depending on that one girl at the bar, so to speak. That's kind of, that's kind of where I'm at. And then we come back to that August meeting, and, you know, if nobody decided they want to do anything, then we revisit it and figure out what we want to do. That's kind of what I'm--
And that would give us time to think more about this process of doing it on our own.
And think about the names you want from your community leaders, who you want involved? Who is, who is involved in the community with our school system, with the Education Foundation, whether it's, you know, our biggest supporters like Jerry Pedley and people like that, who are always singing our praises, who've won national awards for what he's done in our school system. I mean, people like that.
While I concur with that, I also don't want to, I think that one of the benefits of going external versus internal is that they will also seek those who aren't involved in our school system and say, what do you see missing that is preventing your involvement? And what can, you know, looking at those who are not the stalwarts, who aren't the most popular face of those supporting our schools, but get down into the lesser represented communities, the faith-based communities, and so forth, and say, we want everybody's insights, not just those who've always been a part of the system. I think my biggest concern with this, if we do it internal, is everybody always says it's just a good old boys' club. And if we go and we do it, then it's gonna be, we chose based on our personal feelings rather than an external valid. And again, that's what I want to avoid. I want to avoid any perception that any decision we make was a political one or just a good old boys' club. And I'm not a good old boy.
It's about setting up whoever is sitting in that seat for the best opportunity for success. As far as rebid, I really strongly dislike begging companies to take my money. And so, I just, that just rubs me the wrong way, but I understand that I'm not just representing my money. So, I would acquiesce to that.
More comments? I would like to remind the board, even though, whoever we have for the contract, we tell them, this is a mean way to say it, but they work for us. If you decide you want the community involved, the community's involved. If you want open-mic night, where people come in here and talk about whatever their concerns are to that superintendent, that's what you want. They've had, years ago, I think, one of the prior chairs, Bill Tatum, was telling me how they all went down to a San Lee Park, and the families got to come and meet and interact. That's what you want. Again, we don't respond to them. I understand what you're saying about begging them for money or begging them to work, but I can tell you, as emergency medicine PIA, I get offers all day long. And you get, it may be worth at least looking into, because we have not even done references from Beast County for the schools. So, two weeks versus a 10-year, maybe, decision? That's a long time. So--
I think it's worth the time.
Madam Chair? Then, I don't think this would violate my ethics, so I would move to approve a two-week extension to the RFP for the school superintendent's search contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you pose? Motion passes. We will extend it for two more weeks. Stanley High School. Okay. And what date does that give us? Two weeks, so. One August? Okay. That's a good date. All right. All right. Next, we're going into--
I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, A1, A2, A3, and A6 to discuss confidential student information under North Carolina General Statute 115C-42, to discuss confidential personnel information, and under North Carolina General Statute 115C-319, and 115C-321, and to consult with the board's attorney and maintain client, attorney-client privilege.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you pose? We're in closed session.
Welcome back. Does a board member like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chair, I would also move to adjourn.
Thank God.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We adjourn.